And I don't know, Board Docs, we have any announcements? We don't typically do announcements on working sessions. Dick, appreciate your request to record the meeting, and of course you may.
I don't know, John, if you wanted to do the one announcement that we had on here for the hazard mitigation, the public meeting on Monday?
Yeah, I'm not open on Board Docs. I have trouble logging in. Let me check that while we go. If you would do that, please.
Sure. There will be a Topsfield Hazard Mitigation Plan and Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Public Meeting on Monday, October 19th, 2020, at 7:00 PM during the regular Select Board meeting. Please go to www.topsfield-ma.gov for the meeting information to join via Zoom.
Excellent, thank you. And I'm still having trouble getting in on Board Docs. So I'll rely on those of you while I continue to try moving forward. So with that, thank you. Any other announcements to be made? Again, this is a working session rather than a public session. So what I'd like to do is move on to the Select Board Work Session Minutes. And Lynn, if you'd be kind enough to present those, please.
We actually don't have any for today. I got the 917 minutes last night. So I will have those on Monday's agenda. I have not yet received the 924 minutes.
Okay, we'll do them when we do them. Onto item number three, School Resource Officer. And Kevin, is this what you should lead on?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, everybody. The School Resource Officer is relevant to the Mascohmic School District. And the school came to us during the last budget process. And the schools at Boxford specifically came to us during the last budget cycle and wanted to formalize the agreement that we have further and to establish some more clarity around allocation of resources and funding mechanisms for the School Resource Officer at the district. And so I know Chief Hovey's been working with his counterparts in each of the communities. He can maybe elaborate some of the specifics around how the SRO works, specifically what we're looking to do going forward. But as part of formalizing the arrangements, it was proposed from the Boxford Town Administrator, through the Middleton Town Administrator and their Board of Selectmen or Select Boards. And then this was provided, the document that you have on Board Docs was provided to us as the latest revision from the two towns in a very raw form. I'll note, in their form that was submitted late last week. And so that's the document in front of you now is the working document that's been circulated by the two communities now to us. Sergeant Hovey, I don't know if you want to elaborate at all or just be available for questions. Feel free to pitch in.
I'll be available for questions, but I have been working with my counterparts from Boxford and Middleton. Middleton really only wants to participate one day a week. There was strict requirements under this agreement that you have to be a certified School Resource Officer, that we meet those requirements. And some of the departments were struggling with getting a certified person in time for the school year. We don't have anything really formalized right now because of the transition that's taken effect on Monday for a hybrid system. So there's only going to be 50% of the students there. So they're not right now gearing up for that they want us on a full-time basis. So we're still working out the particulars on that. But Sergeant Dan Bell has agreed. He is a Certified School Resource Officer. In the absence of Detective Kelly Pickering and her injury time off, that Sergeant Bell is going to take over that responsibility. He'll be the School Safety Officer for Stewart, as well as Proctor School, and the School Resource Officer for Masco. We have committed to two days a week. Very grateful to our reserve offices because of the funding mechanism of the reimbursement of $230 per day for the 194 days. If I fill the shift with a reserve officer, then we will actually be in a positive number of net $76.16 will be the difference between a reserve rate and what the reimbursement is. So that really helps us out. So I reached out to all the reserves, reached out to Sergeant Bell, and we're gearing up for two days a week. And I'm trying to not have this as a loss because this was not, as the town administrator indicated, that this came in late during the budget process. This was not budgeted by the Police Department for last year. So this is something that I'm taking on brand new and incurring this and trying to do it fiscally responsibly and to not go over budget with this endeavor and stuff. So but I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
I had, I was a little confused with some of the wording and just the background on this. So either Neil or Kevin, if you can speak to, is this something we've had every year? You know, when you mentioned that it wasn't in the budgeting process, who holds the budget of $44,620? Where did that come from? Is that prorated because of the reduced number of school days that we have? How is it actually being billed? Is it based upon the number of students per town? Some questions that seem unanswered in the document.
So the town administrator may be able to answer it better, but my understanding is they took 194 days. They came up with a per diem rate. I was not involved in those discussions to see how they came up with the $230 rate, whether it was a collective discussion between the three police chiefs at that time of what a reserve rate was, or a backfill rate, or an overtime rate. But they decided on $230 a day. My understanding is we historically have not gotten reimbursed for this. We have assigned Detective Pickering to that position for one day a week in the past. And we would backfill the shifts to the best of our abilities. Even if not, we'd have to fill it with overtime. But it was not necessarily budgeted for this year going forward. And then with this new agreement, there is the reimbursement.
Yeah, I could put a little bit of context in this. The idea of a School Resource Officer, I started putting them in Masco back, I don't know, over a decade ago. And the way it worked was each town said, well, we'll send somebody for a day or two. And the result was Topsfield had people over there, sometimes one, sometimes two days. Boxford had people there fairly regularly, otherwise. Middleton, for whatever reasons, and I'm not indicting them with this, did not tend to have a School Resource Officer there, whether it was at all or much less frequently, didn't know. And part of the concern about Boxford was that they were kind of bearing the brunt of the costs for a School Resource Officer. And so the discussions began, in fact, during my tenure on the School Committee, that it really was a school benefit. And since that was shared by the towns, that it would make a lot more sense for it to be in the school budget, but then reimbursable to each of the towns based upon the actual number of days an officer from a given town was present. So the towns didn't have an undue burden. As you've just explained, Chief, if you have somebody there, you can invoice and get paid back for that time. And it allows the towns to fill in. So if one town does five days in a row, well, they bill for five days and they're not at the disadvantage they felt they were before. So it's designed to kind of shift the budgeting responsibility to Masco School District, which I certain the one thinks there is exactly the right direction to go on this.
John, when did that start? That shift?
That shift, you know, discussions when I was still on the committee, so that's a couple of years ago. But this is the culmination of conversation. I know I'd had a call from the people in Boxford who said, what do you think about this? And I reported on what had been discussed before and that my belief that it was a rational way of sharing it. And that I have always felt that the Masco School District, because we all share the costs of it directly or indirectly, that should be the center for budgeting it at a certain amount that covers the needs. And then within that, the needs can be reimbursed to the towns as used. So that way, if there's a Middleton officer that is assigned but can't make it, and you send a Boxford officer, well, the Boxford officer is going to get paid for that, not by their town, but by the district ultimately.
So does the district have the $44,000 in their budget?
Well, that's the whole point. They're going to add that. And needless to say, that will come back as part of the budget that we end up approving. But we were either kind of sending people and wondering, were we getting reimbursed enough for School Resource Officers? This way, you know, as a town, you're getting reimbursed. And as a school, you know that you have the budget to ask those people to be present or to be assigned there. So it really is just a shift in the way it's done. And frankly, I think offers a little bit more guarantee that there will be School Resource Officers there because they can be planned on by the chiefs, knowing that they're not incurring additional costs.
So how does this actually work then? Say that we have, you know, Dan who works for a day. What's the process? The chief would submit to Masco that Dan worked for a day? And then they send out invoices to the other two towns?
No, no, what happens is each of the departments, and I don't know what frequency, but they would send out an invoice for the dates that they had provided offices in school. They would be paid out of the Masco budget. So they wouldn't be town police departments, in any case, having the budget for School Resource Officers. That kind of comes off their plate. But what would happen is one of the line items in the Masco budget going forward would be School Resource Officers. And then that $44,620 would be a line item. That is assigned to cover the costs of having the towns provide. And the towns will invoice Masco. Masco will send a check to each of the towns according to what they actually used in the way of School Resource Officers.
So is this a discussion for next year, since they don't have the $44,000 right now in their budget?
I think it's to get ready for next year. I don't think it's gonna, I can't speak.
It's this year, I think. I think it's this year.
Maybe this year because they're waiting to see whether they're going to go back full-time. Needless to say, if they don't, let's just say, for whatever reason, it stays remote learning and they don't need School Resource Officers, then this money would stay in the Masco budget and would roll over for their consideration of what they're going to do. But I would expect that each year going forward, there would be an amount, perhaps somewhat similar, that would be in their budget and would be assigned for this specific use. School Resource Officers have proven to be extremely helpful in schools in many ways. And I won't go into the details of that. You can ask Chief Hovey for input on that and so on. But the administration really likes having an officer on hand. They've been able to cut some tough stuff off. And sometimes having an officer right there to take care of something kind of softens the interaction necessary when something goes really wonky.
So I'm sorry, I'm probably being slow on this. I just, then bottom line again, if this is for this year and if this is approved, we start doing this, then Masco has $44,000 as a pool of money out of which to start paying the towns?
I would guess that's, my own feeling is that's kind of their concern because it's their money, they're going to be paying us as we use it. But what needs to happen is an agreement has to be made between the towns that this is how we'll do it going forward. And I see no downside for Topsfield on this because it would mean going forward, once the school is occupied, going forward, that it would likely be a Resource Officer, School Resource Officer on site most, if not every day, and that we will get reimbursed for them. So the $44,620 has nothing to do with our budget. It's everything to do with Masco's. They're just putting a top dollar amount on it.
The statute responsibility falls to the town in which the school is located. Obviously, obviously, that there needs to be a certain amount of fairness in that. And that's what this is trying to do in part, is work the fairness part out and find a way to do the dollars. The idea of having a per diem is essentially the only way to do it because it allows, first of all, Masco to do a budget on what that would be and solid number that they're going to deal with. Can't be more, could be less if we don't provide all the officers. But they theoretically want one there every day. That's the plan. And they can do their budget planning. And then the towns, as pointed out, get reimbursed. My understanding is that that will be done periodically, for example, on a monthly basis, and that that money will go to the general fund when it comes into the town. Now, this particular document that we have in front of us is a very small part of the whole document, if you would. The document refers to the one that has been put together between the Boxford Police and police chiefs in general, because you were all involved with it to some extent. But again, it's Boxford's initial responsibility. That document is referenced in this. So this particular document is really trying to just deal with the dollars. And I do think that there is some textual stuff that needs to be fixed in it, but that's generally what it's about. I did have one question, which is probably worth of us to discuss, which is whether the police chief should be signing this. I don't believe the police chief should be signing this. This is simply between the executive responsibilities at the regional school and the executives of each of the towns that are involved in the dollars. The chiefs are clearly involved with this whole thing, again, with the MOU that's referenced in this. And that MOU, I suspect, is probably about 10 pages long with all the rules and regulations that we've set up. But I don't think that they should actually be asked to sign this particular doc.
Yep. Dick, I would just point out, I'm not disagreeing with you. Obviously, the police chiefs have to feel this is a viable system because they're going to be requiring the person power to make it happen. The district has to agree to it because the default is, as you pointed out, it's Boxford responsibility. And given that it is a tri-town effort, it's a district. The fact that geographically falls within Boxford versus being a few yards this way into Middleton or that way into Topsfield, Boxford feels they have basically carried a sometimes unfair burden. So you're right, it takes an agreement between the towns to do it. It takes an agreement between the chiefs to agree that this is going to work. And then the towns need to sign the agreement with the Mascohmic District. I'm not clear whether this is the entire document that's necessary, but I certainly would support it in terms of the direction to go. And I don't know whether, Kevin, you have any addition?
John, as I said, the key document really is the MOU. This is simply a layer, this is a layer, not a layer. This is a superior document that deals with the dollars and incorporates the MOU. It's in the MOU.
Yeah, we haven't done the MOU yet.
And agreed.
Yeah, we haven't done the MOU yet. Yeah, no, we haven't done the MOU yet. I think there's another document.
We haven't done it. They have done it, and they've been working under that.
Okay, this is under the same MOU as before, Kevin. I guess, could you explain?
It's dated, it's right in our document, right in the document that we have there. August 28th or something of last year. That's the document that is key in substance, in the huge substance of this whole arrangement. And that's where the police chiefs have worked together, and that's where the guts of it are. So it's fine. This is, this is just the overlay.
Okay, I'm sorry if I missed that.
And the dollars and how to deal with the dollars and cents in an agreement, intermunicipal agreement as to how to deal with the dollars.
Okay, I apologize, I missed that, but I accept your explanation. Kevin, anything further to be said?
I'd only say that I did get some feedback on some of the language from Mr. Gant, which reviewing it looks to be fine on my end. I didn't see any issues with that language. It just, it was some clarity points that were made, which I think improved the document.
The only thing I would add, Kevin, I don't know actually what Dick submitted, but it says early on in the very first paragraph that the School Committee herein called "school district," in quotes. And then later on in the document, they keep referring to just the district. I would change the wording to be "school district" because that's what it was defined as in the first paragraph.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the kind of changes, that's the kind of changes that Kevin has from my markup, including the use of "the," what was it, "the towns." There's some fixes in there about all those things. But if, so that's good, thank you. What our objective, I think, today is, is if anybody has any input as to corrections, I would say get them to Kevin because they need to go back to the other towns now to come up with an agreed-upon document that is clean, in spite of the fact that text, the name of this one has "clean" in it. But that's exactly what you did, Lynn. Get those inputs into Kevin either now or in the next day or two so he can then take those inputs and pass them out to the other two towns and get it fixed.
Well, Kevin, I'll just verbally tell you my other one so I don't have to type up something. It's just on the last signing page, we're no longer a Board of Selectmen, we're a Select Board. So town of Topsfield by its Select Board.
Mr. Gant had that one as well, so we should be all set. What, just from an order.
If I had, I don't want to stop anybody from coming in with corrections. That's good, thank you, Lynn.
Oh, no, no, I just wanted to make sure it was, it was, thank you, we have it. Good catch. What I'll do from an order of operations at this point, I do have, I put this as a placeholder on Monday's meeting for a vote, if the board's comfortable with it. What I'll do is I can circulate this back to the different towns, get as much feedback as quick, as soon as possible. If the, if the, I don't think the language that was added changes the essence of the document, just provides some additional cleanup and clarity. If it's at the discretion of the board, I think they're going to take this document up on Tuesday in Middleton with their Board of Selectmen. If we wanted to, we can either take it up on Monday based on the feedback I get in the next 24-hour business day, or next 24 hours, I say, 36 hours. And if we got somewhat of an agreement with the other town administrators that the language is acceptable and that they'll use that as their document to be voted on, we could make the decision on Monday night to take this up for a vote, if that's the will of the board.
Interestingly enough, it's important to get it done, but I don't think that there's a hard date that makes a difference here. We need to get it done, but if it doesn't get done on Monday, it gets another two weeks for the, because the other towns are working on it, thinking about it, whatever it is. I don't think it's a critical issue. The timing is.
Kevin, does this document have the input of Middleton and Boxford? They already did their edits? They're just waiting now for hours?
This is, the version that you have in front of you has been looked at by both boards in both communities. And they're now waiting our comments back. And Andy in Middleton put this on their next meeting, which is like I mentioned, Tuesday, to take up a document, the document that's agreed to, and vote it through. So to Mr. Gant's point, if we don't make Monday, that's okay. It's been out there for a while. But if we get good feedback, we might be able to make a motion potentially. But it's not guaranteed.
Going back to you, Lynn, and your questioning about the procedures and the process. I don't have it all in front of me, but the markup that I put in there. But there's, I think it's in the first item number one or something. There's what seems to be a sentence, but it's not, it's a fragment. But it's in there that there's apparently an explanation of trying to understand how this whole invoicing will happen. And then it goes on, and the next sentence after that is essentially a repeat of what's in the end that has a whole discussion of this. They just have to do some work on it and get it clean. And very much in answer to your question, what's the details of the process?
Well, on Monday then, as long as all of our input is together, if we're comfortable with our input, we could vote on it and give it back to them. And then if they have any concerns on Tuesday with anything that we've done, it could be readdressed. But it sounds like we probably have a good chance of getting all our input to Kevin.
Yes, but that one phrase has, is a comment that requires a fill-in, a correction, which will help describe in somewhat more detail, I think, the invoicing process.
Okay, I don't know what you had for comments, so.
Boyd Jackson here. I don't see any reason why this can't wait for a little while until we have another Board of Selectmen's meeting at which we could take a vote or at our next work session.
Yeah, I think that probably makes sense. Sounds like there's still a little bit of tuning to be done on language and make a lot of sense to do that. And I'd encourage anyone who has questions about process, Lynn, or Dick, or anybody, to just send that or talk to Kevin about it and see if we can be clear. So maybe it can be brought up for a vote whenever our next meeting is.
If it's, what I can do for everybody is I'll send out Mr. Gant's edits, which is the version we talked about. And if you have edits from that version that you'd like to incorporate, if you can send them back at your earliest convenience, I'll send that back out to the other town administrators. If I get feedback from everybody by tomorrow, tomorrow, if it's Monday, it's Monday. If it's after that, it's after that. But as soon as I hear back, we'll put it out to everybody.
Great.
Okay. Are we happy with that? Are we ready to move on to the next item?
Yep.
The next item is, we have a piece on document version. You may recall, there'd been some discussion about that, some ideas. And I know I've been concerned about keeping things straight for the board. And Dick has longer than myself. And Dick was kind enough to volunteer to put together a kind of a, here's how we could go about doing it and a system that we could develop. So Dick, I'm thinking perhaps we ought to let you explain the document that you provided and tell us about it.
So the subject came up when we were talking about some document, and I made a comment about an approach to naming it so that we can find the documents when we're going through various versions of them. So there's really two pieces that are in this, two pages. The first page does deal with a naming convention that we can use. We can fix that naming convention, change it around. But it does have a convention and a reason for the layout as it is. The second page goes on and attempts to do something additional, which is to draw in the internal document itself, the same information that is in the name. So let me give you a little history on this within Microsoft. Microsoft, about 15, 20 years ago, had a procedure that allowed someone to take the name and put it in the document. And every time you opened the document, it would go get the most, the current version of the name, if it was there. Now theoretically, it wouldn't change, except if somebody went and went in file and go ahead and changed the name of the document, then when it opened it up, it would update it to the whatever it is. They had a problem with it because people complained, well, it took time to do. So every time you opened a document, it was one more piece of code that had to be processed. So they pulled it out, and it's no longer available as part of the automatic process. So what I did though, but they do have a procedure by which you can pull in the name of the document, the file name of the document, and put it someplace in the document. I use that as a write, and that's the write-up on the second page. The concern with that, though, is that it doesn't get updated every time there is a change in the name of the document. But it goes on, this procedure goes on to explain how to do that easily. All you have to do is go to File, Print. You don't have to print it, but you have to enter the print function, and that drives the auto-open, if you would, that goes ahead and, no, it's not auto-open. It goes through the process of going out and getting the file name and inserting it, the most current version that that document is based on. There is an alternative, and that is to write your own macro. Do what they took out of the code back 15, 20 years ago. But I'm not into writing macros. That's me, I'm not into writing, I've written plenty of macros. It's not the writing of the macro. We don't want macros essentially in our process. Then somebody else has to have a macro, it has to have been in the document. And macros are an open door to hacking because your doc has to be available to do macros if you want the macro to work. So I just totally take that out as a process. I think it's the wrong thing to do. But again, I have this write-up. It gives an idea of how to do it. My suggestion is if anybody has any inputs, I'm sorry that this didn't really get on Board Docs until yesterday. If somebody has any comments, no, that's fine. But my suggestion is to go ahead and read it through. I'll talk about the naming a little bit more before we end this. But to read it through, try it, you know, a sample of it, whatever the instructions are, see if it works for you. Let me go back, though, now to the naming. The naming has two main pieces. The first part is the actual name, the description of what this happens to be. And the second part is the one that has a version revision number in it. By keeping that, the first name, first of all, the name describes what it is, but by keeping that name exactly the same. By keeping that, the first name, first of all, the name describes what it is, but by keeping that name exactly the same, it will always sort together. So all versions of the document, if we keep that name the same, will sort together in a file structure. Then the version themselves, as long as we keep the number of digits, the V and then the number of digits the same for the version dot revision, then they will also sort in equal order. If you do reverse sort, then you wind up having the most recent one is the one that you see. Um, the, there, then there is a third piece and it's like a, a, a working piece that we've used for things like our minutes, and that is to put your initials in. If you make a change to one of the revisions and you want to pass it in, then somebody can say, oh, there's the revision empty up with the one work that Lynn did or the work that John did because it has uh, LB or JS or whatever the case may be. So that's basically what the approach is. Uh, any questions I'll take now, but again, if, if there's no more questions, I would close this out and simply say, try it, see how it works and come back with, um, any, uh, improvements.
Again, two things. Um, one is, um, this looks like it was written and conceived by a guy who can write macros. So it's a backhanded compliment and concern, um, because it will not be used by people that can, I think being willing to give it a try is one thing. Um, the key is going to be how easy is it to use in practical fact. Most of us are going to be creating um, uh, edits to things and the documents originally will be created, um, in the office. The one piece that I'm personally interested in seeing, because when I organize things, I oftentimes am thinking of a timeline and I know something came before here. As I've said before, um, if I see a version three, I don't know whether there's a version four that superseded it or a version, uh, you know, this is really something new from version two recently. Whereas if there's a date and the date is today's date and it says version three, then I can say, no, this is the only one I've gotten today. This is the last. So my own feeling is I would like to see incorporation of dates in some way, whether it's in another place in the footer of the document. Maybe easiest to do it that, but when I go looking for things, I oftentimes use dates as much as version numbers. So that's the only thing I would say. Um, you can do an expanded, when I look at my index, I always expand it out so I can see the dates for that very reason.
One of the things that we would have to think about with dates, it's good to have the date. You're talking about having it in the document such as in the footer or something. That's excellent. One of the things to think about though with the date is which date, they have a number of different kinds of dates. You have the creation date. You have the last fi- time it was filed. Is it, there are a series of dates that are available and that same approach that I said you, that you can use, the, um, where you pull in the file name, you also can pull in the date. I mean, it's, it's no big deal, but, but again, which date you want is the one that makes the difference. And, and yes, we can add, well, you know that
I think
That's very, very much available to you.
Yeah, I think, I think that's worth thinking about. Um,
Good.
But, um, that's something to reflect on as we look forward.
Excellent.
Um, any further discussion right now or people want to think about this, we'll bring it up a bit later.
I'd just like to say overall, I think it's a pretty good job. I, um, it's, it's beyond me and I've got to study it, uh, a little bit. Uh, but appreciate the work you did, Dick, and, uh, we've needed a, uh, we've needed a version control system for a while. So I'm, I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah. Thanks for doing this, Dick. A quick question, just overall about when we move from one version to another. What is the defining moment from when we go from like a version 1.03 to jumping up to a version two?
That's an excellent question. Um, within, within revisions, let's say, and it's kind of commented in there, within revisions, you may leave changes that have been put in. We have, we have version one, revision one. And in revision one, somebody changes the to a. When we go to version, version one, revision two, revision two will keep that fact that somebody changed a to the. But they also, somebody else did something else over here, something else over there. So the, the various revisions will, will maintain, not necessarily, because it depends upon whether people agreed at some point, oh, no, no, those are absolutely right. Keep going. But it can very well ma- maintain changes that somebody's suggesting that haven't been approved yet. The version is the point at which you say, all of these things are agreed to. This is a new version with all of those things incorporated and we're going to use that as a base to go forward.
That's what I was going to say, because periodically we're going to all review these documents together and we're all going to agree, this is the current version of the document and that would be what launches it from a version one to a version two.
I think that's exactly right. The cumulative, um, edits that we do, um, and so on, they can be the point da-da-da-da-da. Then finally, when we have a discussion about them, we say, gee, there's enough edits and so on. Let's now call this the next full version number. And that will, um, there might be exceptions to this, but in most cases that would be a consensus of all of us on the board at the time who are looking at the documents saying, yeah, time for a new version. Mostly it's to clean up all the things we have changed and now give us a chance to look at any other new things. Oftentimes a new version is appropriate if you're preparing it to send out to somebody else to look at for any reason. And, um, version numbers can confuse things. So best to do it that way.
Um, not to add complexity, but if we have, let's say, version 1.02-ac, um, I would think then there could be a version 1.02-LB and that gets submitted. And then when all of those are incorporated, then does it go to a 1.03? And then when it's approved, go to a two?
That would make sense at that point. So everybody has been given this version with, with 1.1.12. I, I can't remember what you said. 1.12, we'll say. Everybody's been given it. We've got a number of documents coming in with all kinds of initials on them and things like that. Somebody aggregates those. Hello, Debbie. Somebody aggregates those and takes the input from AC, BD, whatever else and creates a, a updated document, which then becomes revision one.
Uh, 1.3 or 1.03?
1.3.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Got it.
I mean, that, 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 the, the same process governs that change as governs the change from a version one to a version two.
The one is an aggregation and when you jump from a, a version one to a version two, that's an approval, like we've discussed and approved.
Yeah. And, and agree, it, it's, it's no hard line as to what is a ver- when we do a version. As John said, it's kind of up to us to say, you know, at this, or Marshall said, we all get together and we agree, okay, we have a new version. And the idea of it going out to somebody else, for example, to, uh, to be posted, uh, to the, to the FinCom or something. Uh, maybe then we want to go to a version, uh, just a suggestion of stuff. Do you have the basic concept of when we're going to move to a version?
Yep.
We're getting there.
It's a good step in the right direction and, um, uh, I, this is great. I think we want to look at it, review and so on. Um, the only question I would have, and it may be a function of looking at this more closely is, um, if, as I always say, if we can condense this down into an easily read single page for all people to adopt, at least with select board business going forward, then that will be, you know, I, to me, that would be the goal. Um, but having these examples for now and so on is great. So, um, I'm comfortable with that. Is there any, um, any other further conversation at the moment or are we ready to move to the next? Okay. We will go on to the next then. Again, thank you on that, Dick. Um, the proposed town goals. So, um, we now have, um, uh, this, we've talked before, um, the processes, I recall it. Everybody brainstormed, we put them together, came into a big list. The list got put together. Um, it was kind of, we all sort of felt, you know, things weren't really kind of set up and organized under the right combos and so on and so forth. Um, at that meeting, um, I went around and polled, um, each of us individually and said, so kind of what are the ones that at the top of your list to see go on? What are your priorities? Um, and I didn't specify a number, but everybody was really good about basically doing two to four. And I figure, well, those are the ones that need to be, um, paid attention to will probably belong there somewhere. So here we are back again. Um, this is not, um, critical in terms of determining what our board agenda is going to be, um, in the next meeting or two or anything like that. But, um, it does two things. One, it, um, helps us realize that we have a goals and focuses that go beyond just the management functions that we all need to do, keep doing as we have been. And it also sends a message to the town that we are as a board looking beyond just, let's get through this year. That's an important piece. We've got to get through this year to have a next year. That is, you know, if a sense that's automatically the implied job one, but, um, you know, having a sense of where we're going and what we think the town should be doing is the purpose of this. So with that, we've collected a number of documents and, um, I'm just looking here. Um, there we go. So, um, I took from the conversation we had on the 24th of September. Um, I did a tally and I actually posted the tally. I sent it out to all of you. Um, I want to emphasize this is the tally. And then the bottom half was sort of my take on how things kind of glom together a bit. Um, partly because there were 10 things that were mentioned and my own belief very strongly is that you can't focus on 10 things at once. I think even five's a stretch, but there we are. So I gave you some rationales that I have and they were exactly that. That's why my name's on it and it's not a board document per se. Um, with that, we then went on and, um, Kevin, you provided another version. Oops. There was the proposed objectives. Um, these were from the meeting before and so on. What I'd like to do is see if there is a way and, um, I don't know whether Donna, you're able to post the email or Kevin, you could post the email, um, onto Board Docs.
Did Debbie give you sharing, uh, screen sharing, Donna? No, she didn't get back.
No, well, I was going to ask to have it actually put on Board Docs, but hang on a sec. Let me see what I
I don't think she knows how to, she has access to do that, but.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to go look because I think I, we'll see if we can do it here. If I can, I can. If I can't, I can't. So this is, um, oops, it's not the document here. Um,
Like I've said all week, I don't have long blonde hair and high heels.
But you have a great looking sweater.
There we go. Well, this, let me try this. Post disables 10D screen sharing. We need, um, Kevin, a question for Debbie. Is there any way she can look into allowing default screen sharing for all the board members?
Oh, hey, Deb, it's Lynn.
I didn't think.
I, I want, I want, I want Kevin to ask Debbie when she comes back. I'm not asking Lynn, I'm Debbie, Donna, for you to take um, responsibility for this, but when Debbie comes back, she knows everything. Can she set up a default allowed square screen share? So we don't have to bugger each other.
For at least this immediate meeting, Deb's coming in and she said in two minutes, we'll have screen share.
Oh, okay. So let's hold off on, so, um,
What do we want to discuss for two minutes?
My scarf.
Oh, she's I can tell you, I've already made about 550 individual, two pieces per candy baggie, baggies, uh, over the weekend. I've got two coolers filled with individually packed chocolates and candies ready for Halloween.
How many do you get?
Uh, the last time we kept count, we got roughly 600 trick-or-treaters last year.
Where do you live, Marshall?
Parsimage.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, that's
Parsage, Parsage Lane has been a, has been a mecca for those kids for years.
It's literally the one thing that when I moved here, people like, oh, welcome to Topsfield. Where do you live? Parsimage. Oh, Halloween. And that's, that, that's the messaging that we got over and over again.
Well, I'm all ready to answer my door. So I have the world's scariest mask and then I'm going to put my blue surgical mask, my COVID mask on top of it.
Up to four inflatable's and about nine different things to hang from trees. I've got string lights ready to go.
Oh, boy.
I invite you all to come by.
Strikes me, strikes me that you're really a kid at heart.
Oh, yes. Halloween is my holiday.
Up here at Gray Hill, we only get one trick-or-treater. It's Boyd. He comes around asking for candy.
So a preparation for the email that we're going to see, what, what does this email have?
Oh, Donna, you're the host now.
If you would host, please, and if, I mean, if you would, um, enable screen sharing for me, I will share right now.
This is a document that Kevin put together. It was his summation of the five goals. And he put his goals underneath them, which I thought was great because it showed that what he was focusing on with the town supported each of the things that we considered to be his priorities. They're pretty much in line with what John has. The only thing that got added, which I liked, and I think Dick had on his, was some organizational, operational improvements. Um, and there are a number of big things going on under that. And I, I think that's something for the purposes of um, keeping taxes down and improving the efficiency and how we provide services. And, um, I liked that on there. So. Yeah, this is it. This was his five categories.
So let me, um, see if I can
See, I've been spending all this time trying to figure out why I couldn't find this email and now I know why. I didn't get this.
No, you didn't.
I didn't either. No, I, we, none of us did, Marshall, the way it sounds.
Well, looks like
John and Lynn got it.
Yeah, they're, they're fancier than we are.
So I just want to share this. This is what, um, Kevin, uh, suggested and, um, so my sense, this general consensus in the overall direction and so on, it's a matter of formatting and how we word things, which I personally am not terrifically sensitive to. Um, open this for conversation and any thoughts on how we want to proceed. I will continue to make some notes.
I loved the category of economic development versus breaking out downtown revitalization and Route One, because there are bigger ticket items underneath that as well, like the master plan and zoning and the housing, uh, looking at housing in conjunction uh, with Littlebrook and, and their desire to do so. I, I liked this categorization. And, uh, as we were saying earlier, our goals can just be the number one, the number two, the number three. Underneath it on a separate document will be, you know, Kevin's goals, but they show they align perfectly with what we consider to be the priorities of the town. So I, I liked this setup for that reason.
Anybody else?
Oh, I don't, I don't have any basic problem with it. We can work with that. It's a, it's a little more input to what those five functions, well, five goals really are going to be, uh, uh, and, uh, we need to, uh, start thinking about those in, in, uh, more, more critical detail, probably. Some of them are already happening. Some of them are already moving forward.
Yeah, I think my sense would be, um, I might put economic development first and communication transparency second and IT improvements, third, um, and then put org, um, prove organizational operations and then enhance financials. I'm okay with going this list. I just make that reorganization because the organizational operations are important. They, to me, don't belong first. I know they're first on Kevin's list because he's leading them as well. He should. Um, and they do not require a lot of attention directly from us, but they belong on there because we keep an oversight. So for those reasons, I would move number one down to four, or if you wanted even five, doesn't matter. Um, and keep economic development first, transparency and communication, which are things that are close to our voters. And then IT improvements as a critical piece, third.
I like that. I like that order.
You can do that. Sure.
I definitely like that order because, uh, current numbers two and three are my one and two. So it, it aligns perfectly with you.
Dick, what do you think?
You order them fine. Uh, I, I, I think there's a lot more discussion about what's there. The order, if you want to change the order, that's fine.
Okay.
Yep.
So Debbie, if we could, um, I don't know if it's Debbie or Donna who is keeping track of this, but, um, let us redo this list as, um, the revised order will be from Kevin's email that you're looking now, um, it'd be that you're looking now. It'd be two, then three, then four, then one, and then five.
Dick, did you have any concern about the titles four, one through five, or are you good with those as goals?
Those, those titles are fine. I hadn't really thought about them now in reference to the five top ones. Those are all good ones. I have, I have no problem with those. Let me talk about this idea that the top goal is that of the Board of Selectmen, and the things underneath it are things that are goals of Kevin. Are we saying that these are Kevin's goals that he has, that we're going to give him, these particular things, that these are the things that are most important that he's going to work on?
I would not say that, Dick, although in some cases that is true. Give you an example, downtown revitalization, Kevin's a part of that, but we now have an ECDC, so they will be very much part of it. That's not directly his thing. This, I don't think there's anything here that he won't have a hand in. But when it comes to, for instance, IT improvements, he's leading that because he's on the, on the various committees that do that. Communication and transparency, there may be other citizens who get involved, open houses and so on. When we have our list together, then my intention is to have us fairly soon, and maybe we can sort of wrap this up basically today, move on to Kevin's goals, the things that we will basically be measuring him on, performance management. And I've already asked Kevin to start by coming up with a list of what he thinks his goals should be, how they should be measured, and to prioritize them. And then we will use that as a starting point. We can add stuff we think needs to be there that he didn't mention. We can say, I know that's really important to you. I'd like you to put that at a lower priority. But we will develop a town administrator's goals list from the point of view of a performance management tool. And a lot of it will relate to this. But I don't think it's a one-to-one correspondence that the As, Bs, and, you know, the subbullets here are necessarily all his priorities or should be.
I would say Kevin can definitely correct me if I'm wrong, but I think when we were talking, these are things that either he's working on right now, or they're on his to-do list and coming up very shortly. So not that they are in a priority order, or that there aren't other things, but he took what he was working on and slotted them to show the alignment between his activities and our goals.
I like this because from posting it this way, I mean, I take out the other under one B. I take out the other. And there's a question, Kevin, because I know there are potentially other departments involved. What you might do is just put about review and refine, you know, whatever like that. But I wouldn't put the word other, because that tells nothing to a, to a citizen looking at it. I, I think these are, are pretty good and should be published as they are right here. So you see IT improvements. What's that mean? Well, there you go. There's the list. So.
Now, I think that there's a lot of things on this list. And I'm anxious to have Kevin do these kinds of things. But we need to be careful that we don't have a long laundry list that is not reasonably attainable. And then let me just give you the two examples of kind of goal, goals, responsibilities that I would expect Kevin to work on, because I brought these up already as an example when we were talking about ours. I said, well, he doesn't include Kevin's, because Kevin has other things that he needs to be doing. And the two were that of Copper Mine Road, a solution, a fix for that, a permanent fix for that. And the second one was, these were just examples, a fix on the grid system for the nonrepresented employees. And that one is a high priority as far as timing, because we're going into the budget cycles now, and the FinCom is interested in what the budget cycles and what the tools are, and how much to put in for this category, that category. So I would say that there isn't just two examples of things that, that need to be worked on, and that in some ways don't seem to be mentioned in here.
And Dick, I don't think.
I would also like to say that I have concerns about the economic development. I think there's too much of a spread here. That we're trying to do too many things at once, and number D is not in my mind. If I go out and talk with any people, and one of the things that we said we should do is go out and talk with residents about things that they were interested in. And I can assure you that I have heard nothing about a need for housing in the town. And I don't think that we're going to find that as a responsibility, nor was it anything in the various surveys that were done by the MAPC that I remember saying, we're looking for general housing and affordable housing needs for the town. So.
Oh, Dick, I would say that that came through loud and clear.
... about putting that as, quote, a priority of any sort.
Dick, two things. Number one, that did come through loud and clear in the MAPC, number one.
Well, I think that somebody put that in there because they.
No, Dick, it was a, it was a very popular idea, number one. Number two, if we don't increase our, our stock of affordable housing, we're going to be facing Perkins Row 40Bs. And we would like to get out of the business of having to fight the government, the housing group on 40Bs. Number three, the reality is that there are a lot of people who do think a reasonable amount makes sense. And I think that this is something to look into. I did get a call from Jerry McCarthy, head of the Housing Authority. He and his committee are very interested in looking into increasing the affordable housing and, I say affordable, and that does not necessarily mean.
Reasonable.
Reasonable, reasonable housing and so on. We do not have a lot of vacancies in our current stock of affordable housing. This is a place people want to live, and there are more people who move out of town because they can't find something affordable than are able to find in town. Now, that's a perfect example of something that I don't think Kevin should be your priority, although Jerry will be in touch with you. But I think that that's an example of something that, let's look into it. It may be apparent that we can't do that, but we will be constantly getting pressure to increase our housing. There's a lot of money in it, and we're going to find that we will be getting applications for projects, many of which we may not want to see. But if we have a policy, if we have some thought as to what we want, how much we want, and how we want to see it, we're in a much better position to control what we may end up getting. So I feel very, very strongly that that one should remain in there. Again, it's something we need to look into. I don't think it's a matter of pumping out housing like crazy right now at all. But there's been no clear study to date on how much housing should we have that's more affordable in Topsfield. And with all due respect to many people who've lived here for a long time, the reality is that most of the housing in town, we're going to become more and more like Weston, and less and less affordable for the people who we see as like ourselves. So I feel very strongly about that, particularly because the NA PC study, I mean, that's an editorial as well as some information.
For a large number of seniors.
And the people that I have spoken to, it absolutely is, is an issue, that there are people who, for instance, grew up here, have gone out into the world and become adults, and would love the idea of moving their family back here. But this is not a town that you can get a first house to. It just isn't. I was looking at real estate listings, and Lynn certainly could speak to this better than I could, but I was looking at real estate listings just today, where a three-bedroom house on a wildly busy road in a not-too-big lot is on the market for $700,000. And that is not a reasonable price for anybody who was looking at what would otherwise be considered a starter home. So again, I don't think this is about building a bunch of houses, but looking at the idea of affordable housing for people who would love to come to Topsfield absolutely is something that there's an interest level in.
And then on the other end, a lot of seniors that also can't afford to stay in town, that's come through too, that people who have been here for many years cannot afford to stay in a town that they would like to retire in. So you've got it on both ends, the people starting out and the people on the more retirement end.
Can I suggest that maybe we add the word affordable housing policy, which puts more of a sense of let's study this and look at it. It's not let's automatically do it. But it's general housing needs, which we need to assess, and affordable housing policy.
Yeah. And I think that makes sense, because it's not, again, like I said, about going out and building houses. It's about looking at the, the market as a whole.
Yeah.
I sense that there is a difference in, in opinion as to where the people of the town of Topsfield are on this subject of housing. I have a suggestion. It's about six months from now when we have our next election. I think we should put a ballot question for information, whether the people want additional affordable housing in the town of Topsfield or not. We don't need to make any decisions now, but I think it's an appropriate thing to do if we want to put this down. We'll put it here, maybe, but to see if we want to keep it here, to get a feeling from the residents of the town just where they stand. Because I do not agree that, as others feel, and that's all right, I don't have, I don't have a knowledge of what everybody wants, but the general feeling from the people I've talked with, that there is not that need. Others feel, as you do, Lynn, or you do, Marshall, that there is. And I think the way to resolve that is to simply put it on the ballot as an information question and let people come in and tell us what they think. Yes or no?
Yeah, Kevin, would you look and see what the possibility of something like that is? The more people vote than go to town meetings, otherwise I'd say we put it in for a non-binding referendum question. But would you look and see what might be.
That's the intent, a non-binding. That's, that would be the intent, is a non-binding question.
Yeah, no, and I'm, I'm just saying, I have no, no, to me, that's part of how you form policy. You got to find out where the people are. So let's go out and ask. And I think that's not an unreasonable request, Dick.
I, I think we would need to find a way to, to define what, what we mean when we say affordable housing, because I know what people don't want are the 40Bs, you know, stuck here and there and everywhere. And I think that there's a lot of people who don't make a distinction between different types of affordable housing. So if you just went out and say, do you want to build a bunch of low-income housing apartment buildings in town? Obviously, there's going to be an overwhelming no to that question. But I don't think that's exactly what we're talking about either.
Kevin?
Yeah. So on the, there's a lot of ways we can approach this. One of the things that jumps out at me is the master plan process. There'll be a significant component of the conversation around just that, affordable housing. And there'll be public forums and conversations where that will be a question posed to, to people in person at the discussion. And it's a discussion component. It's not just a, a black and white question per se, because there's a lot of variance that happens to it. I think that the, the ballot question's absolutely a valid way to, to get some feedback. But there's, I think, multiple ways. And also say, from a compelling, not an argument standpoint, but at least to make sure people have an understanding what it is. It's not the master plan process. Maybe it's a, a housing stock study that's done with some information about the needs in the community. I mean, Mr. Hook made a great point. You know, there, and yourself as well, Mr. Mina, you know, I, you talk to people, and I hear all the time about how high the property taxes are. And I know there's people I've met with about fixed income. You know, the, the economic development is, in its entirety, the hope is that by doing that, you're adding resources to the community, but also adding opportunities for that tax base for the residents to hopefully not grow as exponentially. So, you know, from affordable housing, you know, there could be a lot of legwork that's done before we go forward with anything formal to sort of really give a, a full depth or vision of what that really means.
Which is why I think it's really good to keep it on here, because there is legwork that's required. It's defining it, investigating it, seeing what the options are, so that you can describe to people the various ways in which the town could approach this. It just, if you give it to them as a question, they're going to be lost. They're, they're going to need much more understanding, a bigger understanding of, of what are the options here.
Can I suggest that I think these are good things. These, to me, are the kinds of conversations that continue because we've accepted something as a town goal to learn about it. What I would like to do is add the word on number three D, make it affordable housing policy, which doesn't, it could be affordable housing policy can be, we're going to get to the 10% of low-income housing by the state thing and nothing more. That is a policy. And so we're not automatically assuming that that isn't going to happen. But having a response that makes sense is good. And I think there is being pointed out lots of ways we might gather information, and that we should do that. So not in any way demeaning the ideas. I think some very good ideas have come out. I'd like to go back to the notion of this as a, a list for, for the town priorities. I'm pretty comfortable with that change and the change of order. I'm pretty comfortable adopting this as it is shown here with the reordering and so on. And I'm wondering if we can vote on that basis, recognizing it is different than what Kevin's TA goals would be. Kevin?
I just wanted to, just to that, just, just a little bit of clarity on the thought process of the list. I think it was articulated, but I just want to confirm. So the, the five goals that have been laid out is what I was listening in the documents that I reviewed that was submitted by all of you. I kind of tried to put them in clean buckets, because some of them overlap, like economic development covers Route 1A, covers downtown revitalization, master plan, et cetera. But the items below, though, so the five, they represent sort of the, the big picture ones that I, that I saw, town, town goals, right? The ones underneath it, and it was already sent, I'll just kind of confirm what my thought process was, these under here were things I was listening during those conversations and reading these documents that could fall underneath, that could help get us there. Not necessarily achieve that goal for the town, because some of these are going to always be evolving, but to help us move in the direction where we're making headway on, or being progressive on, on these. Some of these will overlap likely with, with my particular goals. Mr. Gett, you pointed out a couple of very particular ones, which would make a lot of sense to add, but maybe not into these lists particular, or maybe they can fall into one of these buckets if we got creative with it. But.
Actually, Kevin, I think that the grid falls into the salary survey, because that's specifically the purpose for that survey, is to see how we might adjust the grid.
It's, it's the HR report as well, because the, the report will contemplate, the redline version I just received will contemplate the, the grid likely going away to grades and steps. And as a result of that, we'll need to have a bylaw change at town meeting this year if we want to accept these. In which case, following that, we'll be coming up with ways that we do address the salaries going forward, likely outside of that grid, if that's the recommendation from the consultant and the desire of the board to do so. So, yeah, at any rate, I just wanted to kind of make sure you, you all heard from me directly sort of the thought. And I will say, I, I sent this to the chair and the vice chair as just sort of a conversation piece. And it was very late in the afternoon. I didn't want anyone to feel like I was throwing something at you at the last minute. So my apologies, I didn't sense everyone, those were my thoughts on that. But it did accomplish the goal, which is at least start the conversation around them.
And even if these aren't exactly in the order of Kevin's goals or the priority, I think, and someone mentioned already, it's a great communication device with people in town to say, well, what does it mean for IT improvements? Just to, to let them know what it is that we're focusing on and give it a little more depth and oomph. So when someone reads it, they understand what it is that we're thinking.
Well, I agree with that. I, I think it adds clarification to the five major points. And I'd just like to caution that, in my opinion, there, 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 there may not be any end date on some of these things, because some of this stuff isn't going to take place in one year or two.
Agreed totally on that, Boyd. These are directions, directions to go. And it's entirely possible that we could go in certain directions. And these may not all appear on next year's list, because we may change our priorities and so on and so forth. But for this, at this point, I think it's fine. I'd also point out, by the way, four E, I'm not sure what policies are, but they're probably similar.
I think they're policies.
When it went up for a public consumption on this meeting, I said, oh, no.
But I'd like to suggest, this is a consensus piece. I, I'd like to, first of all, see is there any reason that the changes that we have done right now with the understanding that these are kinds of targets of the sky that has some very real short-term and medium-term impacts. term impacts that will be looked at and will come under Kevin's thing? Is this an acceptable list for us to adopt as our town goals?
I don't know about the word short term, based on some of the things that are here.
Yeah.
Hint or there, hint or there. I would like to see, before we put this in stone, let me offer two levels. The first level might be to agree to the top, the top item, improve organizational, economic development, communication transparencies. Have the board agree that those are the ones that we feel are the five most important areas. And Lynn, I like your idea that we, people might ask, well, what does that really mean? I believe that before we put a list such as this out, we should do a bit of brainstorming as to what we really think are the priorities within this. So that, for example, under the economic development, I just think that there's too many things thrown in there at once. If you did, for example, just the, you leave downtown revitalization for things that we're working on now, to make it nicer to have the group that's working now on the revitalization ideas of consistency, the streetscape, and then a master plan. I suspect that one and two, if we did those well, in the next 12 months, would be a great accomplishment. In the case of communications and transparency, I'd like to see us brainstorm on those. I don't think that this is the kind of list that we necessarily just want. I think, I think we want to brainstorm as to what we mean by these and what really is important and what other towns are doing, amongst other things. And transparency, we keep getting input from groups such as ClearGov. You know, there's a, I think there's an email already today even, for organizations that are trying to help get information out to the, to the public or let the public communicate back with us. I think that there's a good bit of, of brainstorming that we could do there and prioritization then within that brainstorming. In the IT, you find to have those things there. I think that there's some brainstorming in there too. What, what some of those things really mean and what we really mean to do on that. And for example, how, how much effort do we want to be putting into this regional IT right now with all that is going on? And if we try to get our cybersecurity down and our local fiber network going and taking care of, taking advantage of what might be in Munis, we know that the CSS modules would help reduce the, hopefully reduce our operational costs. We want things where people can get information that they want without coming to us at all. The information is just there. That should be part of that driver of communications and transparency. And in the case of Munis, that's a good part of that. The employee and the citizen self serves.
Dick, Dick, I'd like to point out a couple of things. Cybersecurity is all, is underway already with a, one of the grants. Fiber network is already underway with one of the grants. Regional IT is an example of something that we don't want to get left behind. You can stay part of the conversation and find out what others are doing. There is no question based upon the experience of many other collaborations in our organizations, there are potentially significant savings in that. We can't quantify anything because we don't know it specifically how, but we won't want to be the people who are left out.
And it's also underway, John, with a grant.
Well, there is some of that already. So I agree with that. I guess I'm, what I'm really concerned about is, these are important things for people to understand that are going on. We're going to need more and more. Your talk about what people need in terms of, if it's people internally, that's one thing. And that's what the IT improvements will do mostly. The second thing is if it's for external people, citizens, that's communication and transparency. And that's where the website improvements are so important. Social media, do we want to get involved? I'm not one who's really keen on us getting into social media, but should we look at it as a possibility? For some people, it's their primary means of reaching out. Maybe there's an importance to do it during COVID and pandemic and so on. So I just, I guess I want to push back a little bit and say, let's not try and trim and tune this. This is a list to talk about. It is not a marching list. This are things we want. These are things we want to look ahead to. And then we'll make decisions within that, where our priorities are and what we're doing. But.
This is not.
And I would, I would ask you this, Dick. Let me use economic development as an example. If, and I think based on previous discussions, you would just assume, for instance, that Route 1 opportunities not be on there. How is this a better document if we remove that? How is it a better document if we say, well, that's not even something we're going to talk about? No matter what comes our way, we're not going to consider, we're not going to talk about it. I don't think any of this, I understand it's a set of goals for the year, but I also think it's a roadmap for many years. And Route 1 is part of that. And as I've said before, I think we can do more things at once than, than necessarily we give ourselves credit for. But how do you see it as a better document if, for instance, Route 1 is, is taken off of it?
Because it is a better roadmap without a laundry list. It provides a better focus as to what we're doing in the next year. And we take, we take off things that, oh, well, we should be some, doing something about Route 1 now. If we want to keep it on there, that may be fine. But I think it's worthy at least of some brainstorming to explain to ourselves why we want to spend time on that, which may take away from some work that's going on to make the village better. That's, that's why it would be a better document.
Okay.
In the case of transparency, I think that there's much brainstorming that could be done on that. Before we, if we put this out, I like the, John, your comment, that this is not, I forget your wording, but essentially, this is not real. It's just, it's, it's a first, it's a first list, but it's not necessarily what we're going to do.
Exactly.
That's fine. But if we're going to publish it, then people think that's what we're going to do. And we're not going to do something that's not on that list in transparency as a, as a key thing to do.
You know, one of the things that we talked about as a board recently was, was taking a higher level and a further view than just what are we doing this year? What are the couple of things that we want to get done by the end of fiscal year 21? Something like Route 1, some of those discussions and legwork has to begin now if we want something to occur in two or three years. We can't just say fiscal year 21 is the only thing that we're going to look at. Some of these things do take multiple years and you have to begin now. So I would leave them on there. The second thing is, I wouldn't let perfection, you know, be the enemy of the good. I think getting something out there to let people know where we're focusing, we can always adjust, add, tweak, but I think it's, it's good to get something out there that's, that's good enough for now and not get tied down in making sure we have the perfect document. That could take months of looking into.
And I would say that, you know, obviously, we're all involved in everything, right? But I also think in my time here, I've seen, for instance, Lynn and John are more involved in the downtown than the rest of us. Lynn is on the chair of the ECDC. It's been their thing. We now have the ECDC. So I say, I feel like downtown, from a board perspective, is handled without me being a huge part of that. And that's why I would turn my lonely eyes to Route 1 and say, downtown's got, we've got an ECDC, we've got Lynn, we've got John, we've got Kevin, and I can always drop in and, you know, see what's going on. But I'm now going to turn my focus to Route 1. We don't have to do everything as all five of us equally involved in everything. We have the ability as a group of us to have different focuses amongst us.
So I would like to make a motion, the chair can make a motion. I'd like to move that we accept the town goals as presented with the reordering 2, 3, 4, 1, 5, and with the spelling edits. And I think that was it, an affordable housing policy for 2D.
And John, I think you had that one other other that you wanted to reword as well.
I will accept a rewording on that, but I'm okay with other, because there are other departments. I would just sort of say, review other opportunities, if that's okay, Kevin. I would like to, as for the 2020 town goals, to provide visioning and direction for the board and the town.
Of fiscal year 2021?
Okay, we call it fiscal year 2021. Thank you very much.
I'll stick it.
I'm not sure we need any further discussion, Dick. I know that it doesn't match your expectations, but my sense is we should take a vote and move on with other business. We will continue to work on this as we go forward and will develop Kevin's priorities within this will have a lot to do with the various emphases and so on. Kevin, one last word.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And sorry to prolong this. For the purposes of, for clarification, when these are published for the public to see, they can see it now, but if, for them to be promoted, is, would it be acceptable if I took a stab at just trying to put maybe a narrative at the top of these of just sort of a little bit of a disclaimer in a sense? You know, the five categories represent the core objectives of the goal to Ms. Bermudas' point, you know, trying to just say that that's the emphasis, but these are certain ways we might, might be able to, to work towards a success within those. Just a thought, and it might be helpful, because if someone looked at this as a raw document, they might think that open houses are going to be a goal of ours, which I know that's more of an operational specific in the weeds.
No, we do need a contextual statement at the beginning. If you go ahead and draft that, we can take a look at it. But what I'd like to do is, we have a motion on the floor for just, not the thing at the very top, but just those five items.
John, one, one thing I, we haven't even mentioned it, and I don't remember this being in anybody's list of goals here, to recommendations of auditor letter. That's a phrase, recommendations of auditor's letter. What is that saying?
So every year, we have an audit and the auditor provides us with a management letter, which gives us a roadmap of ways, for instance, creating financial policies will improve our, our standing with the bonding agencies, items like that, that we can tackle or policies.
Kevin, are there some specific recommendations that you're specifically thinking about that the, is in the most recent auditor letter? I cannot think of anything offhand.
I think, I don't have it in front of me. It's across the room. I opened it up. But I know that Catherine, our accountant's been, she's been emphasizing many to try to tackle some of these. I think, if my recollection is correct, there was one on the special revenues account for, for the ambulance, for example, and that, I think that might have been one, or it might have been just in conversation with Dick Kingston, our auditor. But, you know, those are recommendations every community has when they go through an audit, and it's recommended that the town take them seriously and try to start chipping away at them. It's not an expectation that we'll do every one of them in any given year, but just acknowledging them and trying to include better practices.
Yep.
I think that's essentially a waste. We have, we need to do those things. There aren't any significant ones there that I'm aware of. Having been with this most recent audit and the past audits, the best, the best audit we have is probably from 10 years ago, that was done by the state for us. They came in with an audit and made some suggestions, which we have still not implemented. They might be the better ones to do. I could leave that there, but where enhanced financials are involved, I think long-term forecasting may be fine. But I think there's a lot of other pieces to that, that I'm not sure would quite be long-term forecasting suggests, but I think there's probably more that could be done there. But I'll, I'll leave this as it is and say that I think it's a little sloppy in the case of the financials. Okay. So let's continue to go. Take a vote?
I, I, I don't disagree with most of what's being said here. But the fact of the matter is, this list is going to be an evolving list, in my opinion. And it's going to change on a month or two or three month interval as we, as we get into some of these issues.
So what I would like to offer as an, as own amendment to my motion is to say, implement policy, recommend recommendations, or implement policy and practice recommendations, practices recommendations. Would that make you feel better? Because that's broader than the auditor letter.
Good. Next.
Okay, with that, so we'll make that as part of the thing. So we implement policy and practices recommendations. And that covers, that goes back, Dick, and it'd be totally appropriate when we have conversations, point to this and for the, that one from 10 years ago. That's great. So with that, what I would like to do is take a roll call vote. Are you all clear on the various amendments that we've made and so on?
John, do we have to vote on your amendment?
I'm willing to take it as, since I made the motion to consider my motion amended as I have. If it was enough, somebody else.
Okay, so we're just voting on the overall?
Voting on the overall, as I did it there. So I will start with Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Hook?
Aye.
Ms. Bermudas?
Aye.
Mr. Spencer?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Dick, I really can tell you, I appreciate with all your concerns, which are, even though we pushed back, they're, they're not unreasonable. I appreciate you allowing us to have this as a, a recommendation for, from all of us here.
And could you, could you resend that email to all of us? So we all have that email as it is?
That's fine.
So just, it's public record.
Would you? Absolutely.
It should, probably should be added to board docs next week.
Would it be acceptable to, to make the amendments?
No, just put, no, put it, put it as we discussed it, then it's available.
Okay.
And then you, then there'll be a second one that'll have it as, as discussed just now and voted on.
Okay. Yeah, I was thinking of version control. Make sure I.
We're going to try out the new system, right?
Hey, Kevin.
Twice round, twice round.
We're going to see how well you understand that new system.
There we go. So what I would like to do in this case is now, I'm looking at all these different things here. We are now down to executive session. And Lynn, I have to make a phone call before 6:00. I would, I'm going to stay on the call, but I'm going to take three minutes or so on to just take care of this critical thing. Would you please take over and read exemption three and open the conversation? In fact, I will hand control of the meeting, I will join back in, but I'll hand the control of the meeting to you through to the end, including adjournment.
All right. So by a roll call vote, the board will enter into closed executive session in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, under exemption number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, the board will not return to regular open session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah.
And the purpose of this is for.
Thank you. Reserve Police Department negotiations updates. Thank you. Roll call vote. Boyd?
Aye.
John? Not here. Dick?
Aye.
Marshall?
Aye.
Lynn?
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
All right. So passes unanimously. I'll turn this over to you, Kevin, to give us some context and start the update.